The one on.
We do as presented. Everyone's good to go. I call this meeting of the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify to that the best of interest, best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board while in closed section, session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Aye, Mr.?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
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 Item 3.1, Ms. Robinson, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
I'm here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Robinson?
Aye.
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 At this point, we move to the organization of the board, so I will pass the gavel to Dr. Heron, who will temporarily serve as chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the board must elect one of its members as chair. Ms. Oenby served as chair during the 2019 and 2020 school year. May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for chair of the school board to serve for the year 2021?
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Jim Kelly as the chair to serve as the school board chairman for the school year 2021. Not the school year, the year 2021.
Calendar year.
Very short years.
Kelly has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Nominations for chair of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve Jim Kelly being chair of the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board for the 2021 calendar year. Ms. Robinson, please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you much. I appreciate the confidence the board has put in me to serve as chair for this year. It's a privilege and an honor, and I thank you much. And I also want to thank Mrs. Oenby for her service as chair. She has done a phenomenal job as chair of the school board, and I appreciate all of her great work and everything she has done in her leadership for the past two years as chair. So, thank you, Mrs. Oenby. With that, we move to 4.02, appointment of vice chair. May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice chair of the school board to serve for the calendar year 2021?
I, Mr. Chairman, I nominate Greg Dowell to serve as vice chair of the school board for the calendar year 2021.
Dowell's been nominated. Are there any further nominations? That nominations for vice chair of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve Greg Dowell being vice chair of the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board for the 2021 calendar year. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Dowell. Serve as vice chair. That brings us to 4.03, appointment of parliamentarian. May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for parliamentarian of the school board for the calendar year 2021?
I would like to nominate Kira Cook. For for?
Calendar year 2021.
Calendar year 2021.
Thank you. Mrs. Kira Cook has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for the parliamentarian? That nominations for parliamentarian of the school board are closed. The motion is to approve Kira Cook being parliamentarian of the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board for the 2021 calendar year. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Cook. Look forward to serving with you.
I'm delighted to serve.
That takes us to 4.04, appointment of the clerk. Heron?
Um.
Have a?
Yes, sir. Basically, in accordance with Section 22 dot 1 dash 76 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Ms. Starr Robinson be appointed clerk of the Williamsburg Jame City County School Board through 2021.
I have a motion to that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Ms. Starr Robinson as clerk for the calendar year 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Robinson? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Robinson. Not sure how long you'll serve there, but we'll see. 4.05, appointment of superintendent's designee.
Chair, in accordance with Section 22 dot, uh, dot 1, spot, dash, 76 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Mr. Daniel Keever, chief operating officer, be designated to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend through 2021.
Can I have a motion for Mr. Daniel Keever to serve as the, as superintendent's designee?
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint, the school board appoint Mr. Daniel Keever to serve as a superintendent's designee through calendar year 2021.
Your second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That takes us to 4.06, appointment of member to first, to 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee.
Chair, I move that we appoint Ms. Young to the 21st Century and Career Readiness Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Calendar year 2021, excuse me.
Your second?
Second.
Ms. Cook, second? Is there any further discussion? Robinson? Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. 4.07, appointment of member to the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Lisa Oenby to serve as the school board's representative to the Special Education Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any further discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 That takes us to 4.08, appointment of two members to Student Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I have one nominee for the Student Advisory Committee, and that was going to be, I've got two. Thank you. I would like to move that we appoint Oenby and Ms. Young to the Student Advisory Committee for calendar year 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Robinson? Aye.
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 Thank you. Service in that committee. 4.09, appointment of two members to the Policy Committee. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I appoint Ms. Julie Hummel and Mr. Greg Dowell to serve on the Policy Committee for the calendar year 2021.
Thank you, Oenby. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any further discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you both for the Policy Committee. I know that's a, that's a big job. Takes a lot of time. That takes us to 4.10, appointment of two members to School Liaison Committee. Is there a motion?
I would like to nominate.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby. Any discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 4.10, appointment of school board member to serve as trustee on New Horizon Board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that the school, or move that the school board appoint you, Jim Kelly, to serve as the trustee to the New Horizons Board. I'd like to add to my motion that you currently serve as the chair of that board as well, for which we're grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 All right, and finally, approval of regular school board meeting dates for?
Vote yes, vote no.
Oh, I'd already knocked that one off my list.
All right, Jim.
Apologize for that. Dr. Beers, appointment of school board member to serve on WHRO Board. Is there a motion?
I almost said Madam Chair.
You would not be insulted by that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Dr. Beers as the school board member to serve on the WHRO Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beers is a past chair of that board? Robinson?
Aye.
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 All right, so that takes us to, I think finally, to 4.1, through approval of regular school board meeting dates for 2021. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular school board meeting dates for 2021.
End it in the motion?
As presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question about the joint meetings. Are they in stone? Where do they stand? They draft?
Clearly, they are giraffe because to get that many people to put a number on a calendar this early is tough.
I guess I'd just like to make a request that we start working on that sooner rather than later, get that etched in stone.
We can certainly do that.
It's my understanding, last year, they were etched in stone.
That's, that's why I asked, so.
They were. I mean, Janet did last year. They were etched in stone.
To make sure that's on.
I guess we just need to confirm that.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
Janet's leaving. Maybe they're no longer etched, but they were.
We will certainly follow up. Thank you.
Any other discussion? On the meeting location, currently, we show locations being here at room 300 for, through the entire year. Like to consider transitioning to the county complex at some point, but for, actually, the, what we have here is the regular meetings are at the county complex, and the work sessions are here starting in March. It's obviously to be determined as we go forward. Kind of where we looking at when they're? Any other discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you. Takes us to 5.1, announcement, superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report this evening begins with the heartfelt Happy New Year and welcome back to our students, families, and staff. I hope everyone had a relaxing winter break. Just before the holidays, I shared an electronic card with staff, families, and our community partners in education. Tonight, I would like to say a special thank you to the student artist Faith Stumpf. Faith is a student at Jame Town High School, but she created her festive artwork last year while she was attending Berkeley Middle School. We are fortunate to have such talented students, students in our schools. And speaking of talent, WJCC Schools is celebrating our incredibly talented school leaders for Principal Appreciation Month. Without question, our school principals have gone above and beyond during the pandemic to keep students and staff engaged in remote and hybrid learning. They truly are heroes of hope. Later in the meeting, the school board will approve a formal resolution honoring WJCC Schools' principals. That resolution is on the screen this evening for our viewing public. Our dedicated, compassionate leaders serve our students and families as leaders of instruction and are there to ensure our staff and students can thrive in a positive learning environment. We deeply appreciate the leadership and commitment of the division's principals. I'll end my short remarks this evening with a sincere thank you to our exceptional principals. I rely on them every day, and I'm especially grateful for their wisdom, insights, and collaboration as we navigate learning through the pandemic. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are any updates from board members, announcements? I, I do have one. We're going to try to figure out how we can socially distance this. A phenomenal job.
Thank you. Certainly been an honor and an experience for the last two years, so I'm glad to pass the gavel on, but it's nice to have this as a keepsake. So, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to work with you and lead this division, and thanks for putting up with me, Dr. Heron.
Thank you. Thank you much for your service and your leadership. I really appreciate that. That takes us to 6.01, citizens' comments. Robinson? Have no citizens' comments on? We might want to check on that, just to make sure that everything is functioning in that regard. 7.01, return to learn for WJCC Schools. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, Mr. Keever will give a brief update to the school board on our return to learn WJCC forward. Mr. Keever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As we get started this evening, I think it's important to note for the board and also share with the community that earlier this afternoon, Dr. Heron shared a lengthy communication with our community around some of our planning, and that communication laid out what our operational status was for next week and talked about some other things I'm going to mention tonight to the board. There are four key things that I want to talk about this evening in terms of the presentation with respect to returning to learn. Want to share with the board some additions that we're making to our WJCC dashboard. Would like to review some of the key health metrics that we've done over, that we've shared over the course of the last several months. Talk specifically about the creation of a Health Advisory Action Team that's been put in place, and also detail for the board, the establishment of health safety teams for mitigation review and fidelity. Also want to emphasize that we will continue to collaborate with stakeholders in the decision-making process. We've talked with the school board over the course of the last several months about our dashboard with WJCC, and coming out of the winter break, we felt like it was important to make some modifications to our dashboard to more accurately reflect some of the operational scenarios that we would face relative to COVID positives, relative to quarantining. So, you will note on our dashboard that we are now including, on a weekly basis, the number of staff that are currently in quarantine. We will endeavor to update that on Monday mornings, and that will be a listing that stays the same through the remainder of the week, and it'll be updated again the following Monday. We feel like that is an important piece of the puzzle for our community to have relative to operational status. How many staff members are currently in quarantine and would potentially be unable to help serve students if we were in a face-to-face learning scenario? Additionally, you'll see that there are, is a number of students and staff testing positive this current week. That is a self-reported number. I think it's important to note that. We are asking for families to share that information with us, but it, again, it is a self-reported data point. The number of staff working on site is a number that we have shared with you before. That number fluctuates based on the path that we're on, and you know that as of right now, we stay in the remote learning environment, and so there are no students currently on site. The number 45 represents the number of staff positive COVID tests. That goes all the way back to July 1st, when we began tabulating and reporting those numbers out, and then we have reported out the number of student positives, A, if they're a student that have been in the building positive, and then B, the number two would be those students who are learning remotely but have been reported positive to us. This change, I believe it's live now. If it's not live now, it'll be live shortly, and it's an important, I think, update for our community in terms of reporting out specific data points. Sure?
It'd be difficult to to have asterisks that says about staff updated, you know, that can let everyone kind of sort of, I don't know where you would put it, a little asterisk somewhere.
As of, as an as-of date or something.
You know, or will be updated as of 10:00 AM, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
Sort of that.
Mr. Keever, could you go back one slide?
I tried to, Ms. Oenby, and it didn't work. Let me see if I can do it.
It's okay. So, I think, and maybe I read it. I don't want to, I don't want to mess it up. Now I can't go back again.
There you go. Thank you.
So, I just, and so with the students who are positive, I think it's a, like, when I first read that, I thought they're positive and they're on site, so if we could just clarify what, exactly what you said, that they had, had been on site.
Yes, ma'am.
And then they were. Not that they're on site and positive.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just confused.
I understand.
If we're going to add more language, let's make it really clear.
We will, we will work to ensure that it's crystal clear. Are there, are there other questions about the revisions to the dashboard before I attempt to advance? to advance the slide? Or ask for help from my friends?
So when you say 45 staff testing positive and 29 are in quarantine this week, do I do the math to figure out how many are, no?
I wouldn't, because the, your quarantining may or may not be related to being a positive COVID test.
Right. I was just wondering if we should have a number there of, of the 45, how many have returned to work or?
The, I think the dashboard is such that if you drill in and you look at the actual school information, it'll say the day that it was reported, so that gives you the sense of whether or not that, in essence, your positivity has expired or not.
Does do that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, so the 45 number is never going to go down, right? And so.
Yes, sir.
We're not, I'm just trying to get some sort of if we're winning or we're losing type number, but I don't know.
Mr. Kelly, that's why we really felt the need to add the, this is where we are right now, with 18 reported this week between staff and students who actually have COVID-19, and then 29 others quarantined. So we're just trying to make it more immediate while still giving some historical context as well.
So quarantine, it's two weeks, isn't it? Is it two weeks, 10 days? Which is it?
It's, it's where it starts. It depends on your contact. It depends on your household scenario. There are some people that do two weeks plus 10 days.
But it's, is it, it's, the minimum is, is two weeks?
That is the starting point.
Right, so of the 29, half of them could be in the first week, and half of them could be in the second week, right?
That is correct, or somebody could be coming out of quarantine tomorrow, but without touching it every day and keeping a running tab every day, we felt like the best case for us was, as folks came back from a weekend, we got information, we uploaded the data and said, for this particular week, this is where we are saying our quarantine numbers are.
No, what I was going to say is, I'm, I'm good with, with the two weeks up above, is maybe where it's a staff positive, how many do we have with, you know, the last two weeks?
Well, I, I think that the, first of all, they're two different metrics, because the staff positive is actually a positive for COVID, whereas the quarantine is, you have either been told by the school division or told by your healthcare provider that you need to be in quarantine.
I'm a parent concerned, and I don't really care about what happened in July or August. I'd like to know, how are things now? What's going on right now? That's all.
I understand, okay. We can certainly look at that.
Okay.
I'm going to advance the slide.
Never to come back again.
The information here is information that we have shown the board over the last two and a half or three months. This is our current data as of today. It's uploaded to the Virginia Department of Health site under the CDC School Metrics information. You'll note that James City County is at 683.3 with a 12.3% positivity rate. Williamsburg is at 208.1 with a 6.3 positivity rate.
That's all 14 days. That's why I was thinking, you know, it's like, that just would, it would all dovetail really nicely, I think, if you, if you, might not be able to do that, but I'm.
We will certainly give it a look, Dr. Beers.
So, so the, the 683 and the 208 numbers, those are, those are all updated daily?
That is correct.
I think it's like 10 o'clock that they update those.
Generally.
Yes, sir.
And, and that is an indication of the degree of infiltration into the community?
That is correct. So the, the CDC has designated three core indicators. Core indicator one would be the total number of new cases per 100,000 over 14 days. Core indicator two would be the percent positivity, and then core indicator three would be the extent to which you can meet all of the mitigation strategies. And one of the things that we're going to share with you this evening is our stronger attempt to ensure that there is strong mitigation in each of our buildings every day.
Because I noticed, I noticed, I think it was the cities that has changed dramatically over the last three or four days, because it is over 100,000, and that's, and that's different than, that's, there's not as many, there's not 100,000 people in the city for sure. Not, there's not 100,000 in the county either, but that, those numbers have changed dramatically. I think it was like 2,000 three days ago or something.
I think that the 2,000 piece would be the percent change over a seven-day window. So that's a, that is a secondary indicator that the CDC utilizes, so if you go to the CDC metrics page and pull down Williamsburg or James City County, first number that you'll see is the case burden. Second number that you'll see is the percent positivity. Then, under the secondary indicators, you'll see percent change over seven days. You'll see the number of hospital space capacity, and then the number of hospital beds utilized for COVID patients.
It's red when it's over 200.
It's red when it's over 200 on case burden. That is not the case when you get down and you look at the secondary indicator.
Right, right.
Okay. If I could advance the slide, I want to show you just some data over the course of the, the last 10 days and share with the board a couple of the key things that you'll notice. Right after the 25th of December, you'll see a significant amount of red data for James City County. You'll see that Williamsburg was in the, the orange, and as a reference point, orange runs from the number 50 to the number 199. So orange is 50 to 199. Williamsburg fluctuated some and has now come back up over 200. In the percent positivity, you'll notice some fluctuations there as well, and the, the column just to the right, or actually, it's the fourth column, where there's a combined metrics number. But we have really looked at our data with respect to James City County and Williamsburg and applied a .9, .1 indicator to try to really determine what it looks like in our community. And the board's knowledge, that number at the top, 454, is that combined indicator that, that we've come up with, that really shows a pretty strong community spread going on with respect to case burden, starting at 454 at the latter part of December, and now in the 635 range as we enter into the, to the 5th of January. All of those would be well over the 200 mark that is the highest spread level as designated by the CDC. This is a slide that we have, for the last several board meetings, shared. This is the eastern region individual metrics and burden trend. You'll see that it has been increasing for 75 days across the region. Both the burden and then the positivity rate is in the 70 range as well in terms of the percent increasing. We receive a weekly update from the Peninsula Health Department. We received that update last week on the 30th of December, taken in total for the peninsula, the calculated case burden at that time, and parenthetically, I should mention that that was the 30th of December. We are now almost a week past that, but the case burden at that time put us in the highest risk of transmission, and the mean was 478, again in the red level, and the positivity rate was at 11.7. This is the 14-day case incidence map that we've showed over the last couple meetings. We have circled Williamsburg, James City County in blue to ensure that we can identify that on the map, and you'll notice that the entire Commonwealth of Virginia is in the red metric.
I don't think we need the circle today.
I just, I didn't want to be corrected and not have the circle, so we added the circle in. We, we recognize that the, the data right now is incredibly telling, and it's telling in such a way that we heard that there was going to be a spike in cases coming out of the Thanksgiving holiday after the winter break, and I think if you talk to health officials, they would tell you that that's what we're experiencing. That's what we are seeing. One of the pieces that we felt like needed to occur at the, at the leadership level was to involve some specific health professionals in a, in a weekly or bi-weekly dialogue with the superintendent. That group has been convened. We are going to be meeting weekly, and I wanted to share with you the names of the three folks who are willing to step forward and serve on that advisory team. Dr. Carrie Dolan, you may be familiar with. Dr. Dolan is an assistant professor in the Department of Health Services, the College of William and Mary. You may also recall that she made a presentation to this board, I believe, in early August, sharing some data around COVID. Kendra Robinson is a nurse practitioner and clinic director at Old Town Medical Center. She's serving on the Health Advisory Action Team, as well as Dr. Christine Powell. Dr. Powell is a member of the Pediatric Associates of Williamsburg affiliated with Children's Hospital of King's Daughters, and you might also be interested to know that she is a member of the School Reopening Task Force for the Virginia chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. We have convened that group, actually, yesterday. There was another meeting in late December with a group of medical professionals, and we're scheduled to meet on a weekly basis moving forward. This group will look at our health data as a community. They will discuss mitigation strategies and needs and offer perspectives from the, the health realm in terms of the best way to return to in-person instruction. It is incredibly important for us to focus on mitigation strategies as a school division, and to that end, we felt like we needed to create some health safety teams that would visit our buildings and help us get a handle on the mitigation that's occurring in each of our buildings, to include Central Office, to include the Operations Building. We have shared at every meeting those key mitigation strategies, and the health safety teams will be working in earnest to visit our buildings and to do checks on how things are going with face coverings. Is social distancing occurring to the greatest extent possible? Is there an abundant supply and ready supply of cleaning and disinfectants? And how do things look with respect to hygiene? The feedback that the health safety teams gather will be shared directly with the principal in an effort to help us ensure that we are developing a culture of safety around health and the mitigation strategies. It is our intent for these health safety teams to begin their work perhaps as early as Monday, and we feel like that is a key piece for us as we endeavor to bring students back into the building for in-person learning. Ms. Hummel?
Those, those different pillars, whatever. Are you also going to be talking about, whoops, sorry, talking about the actual movement of students within a building and some of the, you know, we've heard from teachers, we've heard about some of the class change time, what's happening within a classroom? It's not just like social distancing, but actual, kind of the process within the school day, the transportation of the students. Are you going beyond these four to, to get, I guess, as many voices from the teachers, the staff, to make sure they're, you're considering every possible issue?
I would consider class changes to be a part of the social distancing component, and what are the processes that have been put in place to help ensure that, that we are practicing social distancing to the greatest extent, to the greatest extent? So first and foremost, we want to work specifically with staff when they report back to the building in terms of following those mitigation strategies. The second phase of that would be the health safety teams on site when students are back in the building, providing some very specific examples for the building principal and leadership within the building of where we're doing a nice job and where we need to have some reminders. And I think one of the things that we've seen over the course of the last several weeks and months is that we all need some reminders when it comes to ensuring that we are in masks, or that we are distancing appropriately from one another in a lunch setting, et cetera. So the idea behind these teams is to really put some focused parameters around the idea that the mitigation fidelity is critical as that third core indicator for CDC. We have reason to believe that the Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education are going to be providing us with some revised suggestions and guidelines for returning to school, and, and we feel like the mitigation is one of those pieces that we can really control.
So who are going to be the members of these teams?
Is it okay to share the names of the, it's not a secret ops group, but it is a group of some central office staff made up of operations and health services that will visit in tandem buildings over the course of a week.
So it's WJCC employees?
Yes, ma'am.
It's other duties as assigned?
Absolutely, and, and, you know, I'm sure senior leadership will be involved in making, in doing some of those walks as well, because the whole idea is to create a culture of safety and mitigation, that we all are in this together because we want kids back to school.
And I think the other thing, too, to, we need to make sure we're emphasizing to our folks is, is how they behave after the school bill, and, you know, what's, what decisions that are made at, at home and on the weekends and that kind of thing, too. Emphasizing all of these aspects for that part of life as well.
I feel like in our communications, we've continued to talk about that with our, with our parents and staff. I think it's, it's worth a reminder in just about every setting that we're in, and I believe I felt like that was in the communication today as well, in terms of, we all have to do our part. We, we definitely want to bring students back. There are specific things that we can control. What are we doing in order to make sure that happens?
Great, thank you.
One thing that I think is really important, and this is an earlier slide, where it's pretty graphic in terms of the fact that they're, they're, these are big numbers. This is, these, you know, these are, these aren't huge communities, but we have, we have large numbers here. And one of the things that's interesting is you, you, you know, whether you look at the Daily Press or even the, you know, the Gazette, but especially the Daily Press, they just put a list of, you know, the various locations and a number, and that is, to me, that is, that is much more dramatic, and I don't think, I don't think the public gets to see something like that, so I hope, and, and also with the three doctors, you know, I mean, with the people in the. Putting some of that together and getting it out so they, so, so parents will realize that it's really, it is really important to do the things that you need to do, but also, it's out there right now, and we don't want to jeopardize our staff or your children by putting them in, in a setting that is surrounded or, or part of this hotspot when you, when you look at those numbers. And I just, I'm always amazed at some of the comments I get. It's like, you really don't know, do you? You know? And I don't know, I don't know what the best menu for that.
Well, we, we appreciate, you know, your, your work, the board's work in terms of communicating that message, for certain. I think it's incumbent upon all of us to, to continue to share that, yes, we very much want students to be back in the in-person instruction. We think that is absolutely critical. Here's how we can get there.
Yeah. Now, do we, this, I, I know this is up on, on our website, some of those other things up there as well.
I believe, Dr. Beers, that just about everything that I've shared with you is readily accessible either from our website or if, if folks want to look at James City County.
Well, I, I know, and, you know, and everybody isn't going to spend the time, but just, you know, I, I think just firing out some of these summaries, and, and hopefully they'll get in the paper or they'll go wherever they need to go, but this is alive and kicking. It's not, we're, we're not on the downside, and we're just, we can't wait, of course we can't wait to open the doors, but we're not going to open them until, you know, until those numbers get down. I, I, that's really important, so I, I'm, I'm really impressed with how you have, you know, how the staff has extrapolated from the, put it in a form, graphic.
Ms. Dolan? I'm wondering, Dr. Dolan, Dr. Powell, and Ms. Robinson, will they be compensated for their time on the task force?
We have offered our gratitude.
Took it.
It did.
Okay, all right.
And I, you know, in, in deference to sharing their names, I did ask specifically, I would like to be able to share your names. Are you comfortable with that? And, and they, to a person, very much wanted to be a part of the conversation and to provide their perspective and their expertise, so I, I feel like they're fully, fully vested in our community and wanting to serve.
And I think I'm starting to, I'm beginning to get a feel for the role, the job of the task force, what they bring to the table. Did you consider at all, I guess, representation from PTA or?
Did you consider at all, I guess, representation from PTA or, was, was that not, would that not fit the role of the task force?
There could probably be a number of different task forces. We, we felt like this, this one was really related to, and frankly, it's modeled after some conversation that I think has occurred at William &amp; Mary. And there, in, in talking with Dr. Dolan in, in the middle part of December, she made a really good recommendation around a small agile work group that would get together weekly, made up of specific people to look at data and mitigation, that we would as a staff be able to provide the data pieces. Here's what we're talking about, here's what we're thinking about, what's your perspective from a health, health vantage point? So we, we certainly are not looking to exclude people, but we wanted it to be a focused health group versus a focused parent group or focused student group.
That's what I'm getting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the fact that they can offer the health expertise that we as a, as a board and even PTAs may not have. So.
Is that all you have?
That's it, sir.
That's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I just have a question. Dr. Heron, have we heard when our teachers might be eligible for vaccination yet?
We have not been given a date. We're hopeful that they are being considered for the next group to be vaccinated, but that has not been totally confirmed either. But we're, we hope that we are in line to have teachers vaccinated as soon as possible because that is a game changer for all of us.
Right. Do you agree it's a huge game changer if you get, if you get kids back in school?
Oh, what?
No, I just want to, we're just getting a lot of communication and we had some parents outside today. So I just feel like, I, I just want to reiterate that and again say that I support Dr. Heron and I think the decision she's made or is, continues to make are in the best interests of the students and the community as a whole. They're well within the range of normal when we look around the state. And, you know, there really are no good choices, but they're reasonable, logical, and data-driven. And as long as that's the case, I remain supportive. We're hearing from a lot of people. People are really divided and every time I hear from someone who wants to open school tomorrow, I hear from another person who, you know, feels quite the opposite. So there's just a lot of competing interests and I just thank you for weighing all those competing interests. And I know you more than anybody want to get students back. So I just want to continue to offer my thoughts on that topic every time we meet because we are just hearing a lot from people and I understand the frustrations. Jim, could I?
Yes.
I would like to speak as the, I agree with Ms. Cook. We are hearing from both sides. We're hearing from people who, who are telling heart-wrenching stories about their children and the impacts of not having their children in school. I would like to offer the perspective of myself as the parent of a COVID ICU nurse in Fairfax County. I would like to just share the fact that my daughter, who is 30 years old, is probably going to be undergoing PTSD because of the number of patients that are dying on her watch on a daily basis. And when my 30-year-old daughter is faced with having, as a nurse, to deal with the children of their otherwise healthy 55-year-old father who is a pilot, no health, no other health conditions, and then to find that in three weeks later, he's died and there's nothing she can do. There's nothing she can do for him. And I am just saying, for all of you people out there who are sharing your heart-wrenching stories of your children not being able to play with one another or not being able, or worried that their, your child is missing out on a, on a wonderful school year, this is a global pandemic where people are dying. They are dying every single day. And I have growing, I am growing less and less patient with the 50% of the people that we are hearing and their, their complaints about their, their children. I mean, I can appreciate it, but I also have to say, until you're seeing someone that is working a shift in full PPE and respirators and having to comfort people who can't even be with their parents when they're dying, it is a very, very impactful thing for me. So that's where I'm coming from. So I totally support the school division's caution in being as safe as they can be with all of the people in our community, the children, the staff, the teachers. We will get through this, but for goodness sakes, people, we're, we're not out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination. And I don't want anyone dying unnecessarily on our watch.
Delby?
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Kiefer and Dr. Heron, I, I agree with Ms. Hummel and Ms. Cook's comments definitely with regard to the communication we've been receiving from the community. But I have some specific questions about the, when we're able to move into a hybrid. And I didn't know if we were going to discuss that tonight and have some questions about grading. Is that something that we're going to discuss maybe at the June 19th meeting? Or shall I ask my questions now as opposed to the health metrics with regard to return to learn?
I think we're, we're certainly getting some feedback about grading and waivers and pass/fail and, and all kinds of things that we were considering and doing last year. We haven't fully had those discussions yet, but they are, you know, in, in process right now. So I think we're, we probably don't have answers tonight. Again, the Virginia Department of Education created waivers and guidelines for a lot of those things last year. Those have not been forthcoming this year. And so we, we will probably later, we'll be able to give you a better answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. I appreciate it. I appreciate the good work that, that you're doing. I, I think as a board, we want kids in school, we want kids in class, we want them to be learning, we want them on the athletic fields. I mean, that's, we came to the school board because we believe in public education and we want, we want all of that. But we have to do it safely and, and we have to take into consideration, I mean, yes, kids, the data, some of the data says that kids, you know, don't get it, but, but, you know, we have, we have significant community spread going on, going by our, going by our data. And, and, you know, there's evidence that kids can transmit it and then they get it and they take it to, take it home and, and I, I just, I, I feel badly, hard for me to follow what Mrs. Hummel said because I, I appreciate the service of her daughter and I know how much that hurts, it's Hummel just to, for what her, her daughter is going through. And, you know, this is real. We want, we desperately want the kids in school and, and it's not, it's not our goal to keep them out, but we, we need to do it safely. We need to make sure that we're being safe for the community and not having community spread. We need to make sure they're doing it safely for our staff. And right now, the numbers are not there. And we've got to do, we have to do what we can as a community, follow those mitigation steps that are up there as a community just to, to limit the spread and watch those numbers go down. We've got, I mean, that's, that's, that's what all of us have to do that are members of this community for the betterment of the community to get our kids back in school. We need to make sure that we're making the plans when those numbers get good that we're, that we can click back up as soon as, as soon as possible. I think, you know, we did have, we had K through five in hybrid at some point. So I think we got, we know how to get there. We just need to make sure that for the next step, when we get to that point, that we're gonna, that we're ready for that and that we're, we can move to that swiftly, as swiftly as we can. Don't believe that we're there now, but we need to, we need to, we need to do what we are, do as members of community. We need to follow those mitigation strategies. I am concerned with the, with the numbers are going to look like over the next couple of weeks with the Christmas holidays and just the people who've, who've, who have traveled and what, what all of that will do to us. I'm hoping we don't get a similar or greater bump than we had at Thanksgiving, but we've got to let that, we've got to let that work. So it's, it's a, it's a scary time out there and we, we make sure that we're doing what we can as a community.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just sort of reinforce what everybody has said here. Just, you know, if you think of the number, that 630 or wherever it was, cases in James City County, think of a supermarket. You had 675 people in that supermarket, it would be jam-packed. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people. And for some reason, we still have people in James City County and also Williamsburg that are not being honest about following all the protocols that everybody has said are really critical if we're going to put a stop or at least slow this thing down. Wouldn't get that many, but there are, we still have people out there that are not, they either not taking it seriously or they're probably, you know, like many of us, they're fed up with it and wearing a mask and all that other stuff. The other, the only other thing I would say, and I know parents aren't going to agree with me, but I could speak for personal experience. You lose a year or two as a youngster in school for whatever reason, it's not the end of the world. You have your whole life ahead of you. And, and, and the parents that are stressing about this are putting even more stress on their own kids. And we don't have enough counselors in our schools yet to deal with all of that, of that kind of thing. So, so, you know, it's, try to bring it down a notch if you can. It's really, we've never, no, we've never had anything like this, ever. The only thing I can compare it to is maybe the Blitz. My, my wife said, now that's a crazy comparison, but I'm thinking of the Brits and the little kids in London during the Blitzkrieg, a year, two years, the bombs. Those kids didn't go to school. They managed, a lot of them didn't survive, but those who did survive managed to go on and have a good life. And, and so, and this isn't like that at all. But it's just really, you know, I know, and I think the, probably the hardest group are the high school seniors or the college freshmen. It's real, I can't imagine what that was like. You know, finishing up your high school year, not really finishing up, and then going on to college and you can't go to, I mean, it's just, it's tough. It's really, it is really tough. So I really applaud what our division is doing, trying to put all this information together, making decisions about, and we do have plan, we have a plan, we have a phased plan on when we think this is the appropriate time to go to this, to make this step rather than the next step. We're not operating in a vacuum. We know what we're doing. They know, I may not know what I'm doing, but I know the staff. I know staff. I just, because I've heard it too many times. I know, I know that they're, they're on top of this. And, and frankly, they don't deserve some of those nasty emails and stuff like that. They really don't.
Delby?
I just wanted to share that it's, I think it's, based on some of the feedback and emails we've received, I, I think it's, it's, it's easy to compare the school system to a small business here in town. My husband and I run one of 25 people. And the mitigation strategies that we've put in place pale in comparison, like it's just scaled down. To, to scale up that level of mitigation to 11,000 children and approximately 2,000 employees.
Across 16, across 17 buildings, right?
Is, is huge. And so I, I just, I caution the community to, to compare WJCC, the, the division, with the, the yoga studio here in town or LanTech Resources. And so we are a public entity and, and, and Mr. Kiefer, maybe if you could just speak to, you know, some families have said, well, why can't we sign waivers? Can you speak to something like that? Would that be appropriate?
I, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to, to speak to that. I, I, so I'm, I'm going to opt not to. Dr. Heron may wish to, but I'm.
I think the, the option was given to parents to go totally virtual at the beginning of the year. And we're doing everything we can to bring students back safely to school as soon as possible. When I, I think the waiver question has really only come up more often with, to do with athletics. But again, everything I've heard from the VDE conference call just this morning was the message very loud and clear several times in the conversation was academics come first. If you can't get students back into school, which we're trying to do, then should you be playing athletics? And the answer was no. So it's an interesting, you know, we're trying to, to do it all. We're trying to watch the data, bring students back into school, and then get people playing sport, sports, because all of it is really important, all of it. But waivers have not been recommended.
And I guess my point is, I just hope the community understands that, that the division is working really hard. Staff are working really hard to get our students back in our buildings. And it's disheartening to me when folks in the community say, you've had since March to figure this out, when, when staff have been going above and beyond. But I think the scale of the issue is maybe, the community doesn't really truly understand the scale of pulling something like this off safely.
Well, within the context, I mean, a lot has been figured out. It's just that it's not safe to, to execute it, right? I mean, it's not that, so I just want to make that very, very clear.
Right.
That staff has been working since March.
Yes.
Of last year and have figured out a lot and have made decisions that inform what's going, so anyway, sorry.
Thank you for the clarification.
Didn't mean to jump in, but I mean, it has been figured out mostly. It's just not safe to execute.
And it's not safe.
Oh, I'll just add, COVID doesn't cooperate.
Right.
It hasn't cooperated with us. Otherwise, it would be over. And, and I, I think we do what we can do to keep people safe. That's the number one thing. And that's really the number one thing that we should be concerned about. And when teachers get vaccinated, the vaccination is more widespread than I think, as Dr. Heron said, it will be a game changer, but we're not there yet. We will be there, but not yet. So.
And I think the uncertainty and waiting is really hard and uncomfortable. But that's what we have to do to come out stronger on the other side. And for me, it's about safety. It's about what Ms. Hummel talked about. But, you know, it's also making sure that our institution comes out on the other side of this stronger and not beleaguered on the other end. And I think if we try to power through this and ignore the virus and open no matter what, I think we will suffer consequences that will be long-lasting as opposed to thinking long-term. And so I think, I appreciate Dr. Heron thinking long-term rather than short-term because I think we could make the mistake of being a little bit less conservative and advancing short-term, but I think that would have long-term negative consequences that we can ill afford in a environment where teaching is something that people don't want to do in the future. So I think taking the long view is smart and preserving the quality of this institution going forward is the right thing to do.
I would also like to compliment having the group of medical professionals getting together to advise us. I think that's, that's vital and key. As, has always been my frustration since the beginning of this is that the medical professionals aren't necessarily giving us the advice that we need to. And I appreciate those stepping up to help us, to help us, to give us some guidance on coming through this and what, what we, what we do. I think that's great. You know, and we're getting, we, we have those, those, those parts of the community that are telling us that we need to put all the kids back in school. But the, the community spread that we're seeing in the numbers is telling us that, you know, there's a lot of people out there with cases and there's a lot more people out there that are being quarantined. And, and as I was reminded today by my favorite first grade teacher, that when her kids are quarantined, she can still reach them virtually. If she was in the classroom and the kids get quarantined in their home, she's not reaching them. She's not teaching them at all. And so, so in this, in this, in this era where we have lots of, lots of quarantining and people who, who are required to stay at home, they can, we can still reach them virtually. Now, it's, it's not as ideal as being in the classroom, but those kids wouldn't be in the classroom. Now, it's not as ideal as being in the classroom, but those kids wouldn't be in the classroom. They'd be quarantined, they'd be out of the classroom with no assistance. To Mrs. Owenby's point, I work for a company that's a little bit bigger than hers and we have never shut down. So, we've been, we have been, through all of this, we have been open and working. Today, there are 6,000 employees that are not in the office but are working from home. That was as a directive from our Vice President of Human Resources. So, while we are open, we are virtual and those are mitigation strategies that we put in place. And so, you know, that's a little bit different, what we do is a little bit different than what the school system does, but you know, we're still putting those mitigation strategies in place to keep people away from each other. So, it's a tough thing. And like I said, I want to reiterate, we want kids in school and we're not doing this because, you know, we have some sort of power that we can, we're doing this because it's right now just not safe and we would continue the community spread of this. And so, we need to do our mitigation strategies, put those in place to stop this. Can we move on? 8.01, VSBA Code of Conduct. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer, I appreciate it. This is the VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. This is a proposed action item for our next meeting. It is the same as has been, has been done for the number of years that I've been on the board. Comments on the Code of Conduct?
Mr. Kelly, will we sign it at the next board meeting?
Yes, it's a proposed action item for the next board meeting.
been. Do you have the summary of changes?
Yes, we have the summary.
We'll vote on it and have it signed in.
And we will certainly provide that, the hard copy for anyone who wishes to have
8.02, Program of Studies, Dr. Heron?
it before the voting of the next meeting, so my apologies for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, let's start. We're delighted to present this evening our proposed program of studies for next year.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Heron. It is our pleasure to present the Program of Studies for 2021, 2022 to you tonight.
And I believe Dr. Worley is going to lead us off this evening and Mr. Legowich is going to be presenting also and Ms. Walker.
Tonight's proposed revisions and updates reflect the continuing goal of making WJCC's
So, Dr. Worley, I think you're up first.
Actually.
Program of Studies more user-friendly and relevant as students and families consider
Okay, okay. I'm surrounded by all sides here.
which courses, programs, and options offer the best path toward achieving their goals.
In your documents, you should have a copy, a red line copy of the program of studies.
As you can see here, the Program of Studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan to elevate beyond excellence and specifically support Schools 1, 2, and 3.
There's also a document, I believe, on board docs that highlights all the major changes to make it easy for you to go and see them.
Before we begin, I would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders who
And Ms. Walker, starting first?
Yes.
met, reviewed information, and provided input over a period of many months to develop the
Thank you.
Dr. Heron, we do not have the red line, so it would be good to get that.
I think it's in board docs.
Program of Studies proposed this evening.
Some of us would like a hard copy.
I would also like to note that any new courses added to the Program of Studies went through
And we asked for a hard copy.
Did we?
the New Course Proposal process, which includes an interdisciplinary committee review and considers impacts on staffing, facilities, and other courses within the content area. This has been a year like no other, but WJCC's teachers and instructional staff have still worked to create exciting new learning opportunities for our students. In addition to updating the School Board Member section to reflect the new chair selected at this meeting, the 2021, 2022 Program of Studies will include three new middle school courses and four new high school courses to enhance our curriculum. You will hear more about all seven of these courses later in this presentation. Throughout the new proposed Program of Studies, there are minor adjustments to grammar and formatting to provide clarity to students and families. Additionally, in order to allow for flexibility in scheduling, the code SB for Semester-Based has been removed from course numbers and the terms semester and year-long from course descriptions. These changes were made in order to be consistent with all course codes and allow schools to schedule a semester or full-year courses as needed. The summary of changes to WJCC's Program of Studies for 2021, 2022 document provides a quick reference to find each of these revisions as well as more substantial edits and additions to the Program of Studies. This year, there were no overall changes to the middle school program. Although there were no substantive changes to the high school academic program, there were several updates to note. On page one of the Program of Studies, you will note changes to the Virginia Career Clusters from 16 Career Clusters to 17. This change comes from the Virginia Department of Education and includes the addition of the Energy Career Cluster. Additionally, this section was edited to list the 17 Career Clusters alphabetically, which is how they can be found on the VDOE website as provided in the Program of Studies. An additional update included an edit to the Additional Notes section for diploma requirements for students entering the ninth grade for the first time after the 2018, 2019 academic year on page nine. This reflects changes from the Virginia Department of Education, allowing students who pass an examination or occupational competency assessment for a career and technical education sequence to substitute that certification for a laboratory science verified credit only. Previously, this was also an available option as a substitute for a social studies verified credit. Under the Virtual Learning section of the Program of Studies on page 15, we updated the description for WJCC's Virtual Learning Program to emphasize the need for students to have reliable internet access if they choose to work outside of school. The phrase "and span a semester or school year" was removed from the descriptions of the credit-bearing and non-credit-bearing internship courses under experiential learning on page 17 to provide consistency and clarity for students who complete internships on either a semester or year-long schedule. Finally, we updated the information on New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology under Specialty Programs on page 18 to reference a website where students and families can see prerequisites for the programs they offer as well as adding information about a research requirement for students during their senior year. This concludes the overall updates and revisions for the Proposed Program of Studies. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Steve Legowich, Coordinator for Social Studies, who will share specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at both middle school and high school.
Good evening. We're going to begin on page 19, Middle School Course Offerings and Descriptions. We made minor grammatical and spacing edits to the English course descriptions on page 19. On page 20, we updated the suggested course sequence diagram for middle school mathematics to add a pathway from pre-algebra 7 to algebra 1. This change increases the number of students with the opportunity to earn a verified credit in mathematics prior to entering high school. The description of physical science, grade 8, on page 21, was updated to better align with the 2018 standards of learning from the Virginia Department of Education. There were minor grammatical and spacing edits to the social studies course descriptions on page 22. For the 2021, 2022 Program of Studies, there are three new course offerings in middle school music. The descriptions of these courses begin on page 25. There was one grammatical edit on that page as well. To provide students with better exposure to music concepts and instruments in a year-long course, Exploration of Guitar has been replaced with Exploration of Guitar and Keyboard. This course will teach basic and intermediate technique, reading, progressions, and music theory using instructional literature for both classical and contemporary repertoires. There is an instrument use fee associated with this course. On page 26, we have added two other courses, Beginning Band Grade 7 and Beginning Orchestra Grade 7. Just like the sixth grade versions of these courses, they are designed for beginning musicians. These courses were added to support students who elected not to start an instrument this year due to COVID-19, but also support a pathway to allow more students to begin the study of an instrument later in middle school. This concludes the updates for middle school. A high school section of the Program of Studies begins on page 28. As a reminder, the summary of changes to WJCC's Program of Studies for 2021, 2022 document provides a quick reference to find each specific revision, including changes to course codes. Updates to the English section of the Program of Studies include minor grammatical and spacing edits on pages 29 and 31. On page 28, we clarified that the Honors Extension for Commonwealth Innovation, CI, English 9, World History 2, and Speech was available for English 9 only as opposed to all three courses. On page 30, the course description for Advanced Placement English Language and Composition was moved above Advanced Placement English Literature and Composition instead of below it to reflect the sequence in which most students frequently take the courses during their junior and senior years. In the Mathematics section, we updated the dates on the suggested course sequence document on page 33. The old version, already replaced in the 2020, 2021 Program of Studies, was deleted from the draft document. That version appears on page 34. We deleted the course description for Geometry, 1 Semester, on page 35, as this description is the same regardless of whether schools offer it in a semester or year-long format. On page 36, we added the description for a new Algebra 2 Trigonometry course, which offers an accelerated path for students who wish to pursue a sequence of advanced mathematics or participate in a special program like Governor's School. There was also a minor grammatical and spacing edit on page 36. Lastly, on page 37, the prerequisite for Advanced Placement Calculus, BC, was changed from Calculus, AB, to Math Analysis, Precalculus, allowing students more flexibility in their course selections. A new suggested course sequence diagram for Science appears on page 38, is also on the screen as well. The redesigned diagram depicts courses for which there is no prerequisite in the box on the left. Students in any grade level may take these courses, but students typically enroll in them during their ninth or 10th grade years. The box in the middle includes courses for which one or more of the courses on the left is a prerequisite. And the box on the right shows three courses for which a course in the middle box is a prerequisite. Individual course descriptions in the pages that follow specify what the prerequisites are for each course. Page 39 includes the description for our new Environmental Science course. This introductory science class provides support to students who need additional help with science concepts and skills prior to taking a class with an SOL requirement like Earth Science or Biology. The course will offer students opportunities to explore careers and the real-world implications of environmental science with WJCC community partners. On page 40, the course description for Biology 2, Advanced Survey Topics, Field Biology, was updated to reflect modifications to the curriculum to create flexibility to offer the course in a semester or year-long format. Finally, there was a minor grammatical edit on page 41. The Social Studies section includes minor grammatical and spacing edits on pages 42 and 45. Page 45 also includes the description of WJCC's new African-American history course. This elective will cover African-American history from pre-Diaspora Africa through the present day and culminates with a capstone project connecting contemporary issues to the past. The course will be taught in a blended format with students completing rich online modules designed by a partnership between the Virginia Department of Education, Virginia Universities, Virtual Virginia, and WHRO, while also engaging in traditional face-to-face instruction. There were changes to the prerequisites for Cinema and Advanced Placement Language courses in French, German, and Spanish. Instead of requiring Advanced Conversation and Composition as a prerequisite, these courses now require the Level 4 course in each respective language. This change gives students a faster path to upper-level language electives. The changes for French Cinema and Advanced Placement French Language appear on page 48, for German Cinema and Advanced Placement German Language on page 49, and for Spanish Cinema and Advanced Placement Spanish Language on page 51. In the Fine Arts section, we made minor grammatical and spacing edits on pages 51, 53, and 55. On page 53, the course description for Portfolio Art 2 was updated by removing the sentence reading, quote, "Students may go from Portfolio Art 1 directly into Advanced Placement Studio Art," end quote. This change was made to provide students the ability to take the courses concurrently or consecutively, allowing more flexibility in scheduling. I'll turn things over again to Ms. Jessica Walter, who will go over CTE and the course request timeline.
This year, we are proud to offer the first agricultural education course in our division, Veterinary Science 1, which you can find on page 58 in the Career and Technical Education section. The course will prepare students for post-secondary education and careers in veterinary medicine. It will have rich field experiences that will enhance instruction. There is a fee associated with this course, but fee waivers may apply. On page 59, the course description for Commonwealth Innovation, Art Foundations, Biology, and Computer Information Systems was moved from before the description for Advanced Computer Information Systems to after that description. This allowed a neurological sequence for readers from Computer Information Systems to Advanced Computer Information Systems. Finally, on page 64, the course name Opportunities in Hospitality and Tourism was changed to Travel and Tourism Marketing reflecting changes from the Virginia Department of Education. This concludes the updates to high school courses. This month, school counselors will begin classroom and individual planning sessions with all arising 6th through 12th grade students, either virtually or in person as appropriate. Typically, in February, WJCC hosts middle and high school course planning and curriculum fairs, at which families and students can come hear about the course selection process from school counselors and discuss course offerings with curriculum coordinators and teachers. This year, due to COVID-19, a large gathering of this nature is not possible. In its place, we will be releasing a virtual middle and high school course planning and curriculum fair in the family newsletter on February 5. We will also provide access through our website and social media platforms. The virtual fairs will include videos on course planning from school counselors and on course offerings from curriculum coordinators and teachers. Since answering students' and family members' questions is a vital part of these fairs, we will offer this option virtually. Questions may be submitted until February 12 and counselors and curriculum coordinators will provide answers to these questions in the February 19 family newsletter. Although this virtual fair arose from our current circumstances, we hope to continue to offer it as a supplement to in-person fairs in the future, allowing more equitable access to information about our course offerings and academic programs for families who cannot attend in person. In February, our school counselors will also be facilitating transition planning by providing lessons for all of their feeder schools. Excuse me. Our course request window for the 2021, 2022 school year opens online for all rising 6th through 12th graders and their families on February 22 and closes March 8. This concludes our presentation of the Program of Studies for 2021, 2022. Thank you.
I have a statement that I need to read and then I have a couple of questions. I acknowledge that I have a personal interest in the WJCC School Internship Program, which is outlined in our Program of Studies, because the company my husband owns and which I work for, LanTech Resources, currently serves as an internship site for WJCC students. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the Program of Studies fairly and with the public interest in mind. And then I just had a couple, I guess, comments, clarifications, and some questions. First of all, I'm excited about the band and orchestra and choral grade 7, because I think without that, we sometimes lost our students who chose not to do it as a 6th grader. So, yay, 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 that's exciting. And then, just wanted clarification for Algebra 1. I know that we have changed that over the years and it's like, there was a time when we wanted most 8th graders to take that before they got to high school, but now that I hear that we want, and then we changed that to, if you were struggling, we wanted you to wait and take Algebra 1 once you got to high school. So, where are we now? I'm confused with Algebra 1.
So, the adjustment that's made to the course sequence is simply offering students who show promise after grade 7, a pathway that already existed for vision students to proceed on to Algebra 1 instead of grade 8, pre-algebra 8. And it just extends that.
Our course request window for the 2021/2022 school year opens online for all rising sixth through 12th graders and their families on February 22 and closes March 8. This concludes our presentation of the Program of Studies for 2021/2022. Thank you.
I have a statement that I need to read, and then I have a couple of questions. I acknowledge that I have a personal interest in the WJCC School Internship Program, which is outlined in our Program of Studies, because the company my husband owns and which I work for, Atlantic Resources, currently serves as an internship site for WJCC students. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the Program of Studies fairly and with the public interest in mind. And then I just had a couple, I guess, comments, clarifications, and some questions. First of all, I'm excited about the band and orchestra and choral grade seven, because I think without that, we sometimes lost our students who chose not to do it as a sixth grader. So yay, 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 that's exciting. And then just wanted clarification for Algebra One. I know that we have changed that over the years. It's like there was a time when we wanted most eighth graders to take that before they got to high school, but now that I hear that we want, and then we changed that to if you were struggling, we wanted you to wait and take Algebra One once you got to high school. So where are we now? I'm confused with Algebra One.
So the adjustment that's made to the course sequence is simply offering students who show promise after grade seven a pathway that already existed for vision students to proceed on to Algebra One instead of grade eight, pre-Algebra Eight, and it just extends that for students who are not in the vision's program.
So that's kind of where we used to be, and then we changed it. Kind of going, is that my understanding? We're kind of going back to where we used to be? Okay.
We're allowing more access to upper level for students who are prepared for it, who are ready for that.
And that's exciting. And just one additional question. So when we aligned our graduation requirements with VDOE two, three years ago, so that for a standard diploma, it's 22 credits, the advanced diploma is now 26, and then when we shifted from semester-based to year-long, now children have an opportunity to earn 32 credits. Has there been any conversation about lessening the number of courses students take, like maybe seven instead of eight, because you don't need 32 credits to graduate?
So at this time, we did make the switch to full-year courses this year. COVID has not allowed us to really fully see what that would look like in our normal environment. It is, conversations are had about eight versus seven, but right now, we are focusing on the eight and the hybrid model versus the, sorry, the eight classes at one time versus the four to six in the four-by-four hybrid. As with any change, time is needed to make these adjustments and time management and strategy and practice, but we also will be talking with stakeholders about next steps and considerations.
One last thing, and then, I don't need this now, but I'm just curious. So for the divisions who have all year-long block classes across the Commonwealth, how many credits do they, like, are we an outlier? Are we an outlier requiring students to take eight-year-long? Like, what, and maybe you don't have that now, or maybe you do.
Yeah, I don't have that data for you right now, but I can get it.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
We're gonna go around the horn. We're gonna go around the horn, Ms. Humble.
What?
We're gonna go around the horn.
So whenever I see new courses being added, I'm like, oh, that's great. That's wonderful. I always wonder, is anything being lost by the new courses that are being offered? And by that, I mean, are we maybe cutting down one additional section of a course? Like, how are we accommodating the new classes that we're offering? How do we do that? And when everything I'm hearing is we're, you know, we're at capacity or what? So something's giving, right? So I just guess I'm wondering what, what is, what's giving? For example, with the African, the new African history class, is there any, anything that's giving? Get that?
So the answer varies a little bit depending on the course. For African-American history, that's an elective course, so it just offers an additional option for students there, and there will probably be little impact. Some students may elect to take it over Sociology or another social studies elective, but it shouldn't interfere with any of the course sequence courses in social studies. As for Algebra II Trig, this is a workaround that our coordinator for mathematics and the curriculum coordinators for all our buildings arrived at, because it wasn't working quite so well to have students taking Algebra II and Trigonometry as separate courses, because there were overlaps in the curriculum, and it made it challenging for them to accomplish their coursework in order to qualify for Governor's School by their junior year. So that's one that's going to be kind of a matter of convenience to allow those students an easier way to that path, simply getting rid of a course that was not as effective at helping them achieve that barrier, but it would be the same group of students with a cleaner approach in that respect. And with Environmental Science, this course is, is going to be a strong offering, I think, for us, because what it's going to do is allow an opportunity for students to build their skills in their freshman year, especially if they're not as confident and prepared for Biology or Earth Science that they might traditionally take, allowing them to get some exposure to some of the same content from Earth Science and Biology, build those skills, explore careers, and get excited about the discipline, while also allowing them to be better prepared to fulfill those diploma requirements when they come about.
Hold on to, I have to add on. So like, for that particular class, will guidance counselors be working with students to help, to help them find that class?
Yes, for sure. It's definitely going to be one that's both by interest and by students who might be better supported with that environment, and counselors, teachers will provide.
And then just one other question. So these new courses at the high school level and the middle school, they're offered all, all middle schools, all high schools?
That's correct, and obviously, based on enrollment, it varies where they'll run. However, this year, we do have the advantage of technology from the OWL that will allow us to overcome some of the offering barriers and allow students in building a little bit more access, whereas traditionally, they may have had to seek an offering at another school or forego taking that course.
So would you mind explaining that to me a little bit better, because I'm not?
The technology?
Yeah, I mean, just like, explain how if, if you've got less students, so a course might not take at one school, but they really want to take it, how could they use OWL to?
So OWL would allow students to stream into the classroom virtually. They would have an adult monitoring them at their home school, perhaps a teacher assistant, some other adult who's in there to supervise them. They'd complete their work and interact as if they were in the environment, and the camera would be in the center of the room projecting the lessons.
That's awesome. Okay, thank you.
That's very exciting.
Dr. Beers?
I have got two or three questions. The first question I have is, why did you decide to remove one semester and year-long from the schedule? I'm curious about that.
You mean the verbiage semester and year-long?
Yeah. How will students know that a course is one semester or it's a full year? Did the code?
It actually, by removing it, we're providing more flexibility for schools to identify need in their building to offer a class either at semester or full year. They can, they can code it behind the scenes. If we kept it as just semester, then we were saying this course could only be offered as a semester or only as a full year.
Well, okay, I guess I'm concerned about that, because I remember as COVID-19 started to roll, that one of the theoretically advantages of going to year-long courses was that it would be easier for kids coming back to school. It would be less, less of a, of a challenge than if they had four, four semester courses in the fall and four semester courses in the spring. And what I don't understand is, I know we've looked at data from kids that have been in school, and we noted that they hadn't done as well as they have in the past, and everybody assumed it was COVID-19. Well, I'd like to throw something else out there and say that could very well have also been when we went to a year-long, more of a year-long schedule. One of the things about the four-by-four, and I get calls from, from a lot of parents whose kids are going to go to college. I don't make any, I don't apologize for that, but they, that is one of the things that they are concerned about, is that their kids want to have three, four, five, you know, I don't know what the rush is, six courses under their belts before they go to college. That is much harder to do with year-long courses. It's easier to do with a four-by-four block. And I have not heard any evidence to indicate that somehow, kids who have been in a four-by-four block don't do as well as kids that are in a year-long semester, a year-long program. So I'm, I'm just a little leery of removing those kinds of words, because I'm not sure everybody's going to totally understand that, especially parents. It's like you're, you, you're leaving up to, what, the principal, other staff members in the school to decide, ah, this is going to be a year-long course, or we're just going to do this, you know, we're just going to be a semester course. Is that going to be based on interest? Is it going to be based on enrollment in the course? How are all these things going to come together? And you know, you know, Dr. Herron, you know, I have, I've always been concerned about going to this year-long schedule. I know, I know in some school divisions, it's very popular, but I also know the four-by-four is equally as popular, especially in areas where, where you have kids that are going to go either to professional programs after they get out of high school, or they're going to go on to college. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, Dr. Beers, what we do is, we'll, we'll go back and look to see if we can clarify a little bit more on what that means, so that parents and students feel they're not missing out, and maybe clarify which courses, you know, could be offered in a semester or year-long format. So we'll go back and look at how that is presented and, and come back with some thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, because I do think that, I'm, I'm worried that that option is going to gradually disappear, because of the orientation of staff or desire, whatever it might be, that. I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'd like to, like to see that, because I am, I'm very much concerned about that.
Oh, Mr. Kelly, can I add on to Dr. Beers?
Sure.
As the former chair, I just want to add on.
You had to speak up, I can't hear you.
So just, just to clarify, Dr. Herron, so when the decision was made last year that most classes are year-long, that is the, the switch that we made. So the majority of classes are year-long, so I just want to make that, that clear. And then, a lot of the feedback that we have heard from families, this semester has been, that switch has been more difficult in light of COVID. And I know my two high school kids struggle with managing eight classes instead of four, but just want to make it clear that there are, there are less, there are less semester-based classes. That is a rarity now, where it used to be the other way around.
I think the shift has been to the majority year-long, from my understanding, but RFI will give some more information, but to, the both still do exist, it is still a hybrid schedule.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes. But there are way less semester.
Students can still opt for a four-by-four schedule?
No.
Only if certain courses are offered, right?
There is no four-by-
So I, I guess I don't understand what, what-
So we've always had a hybrid schedule, but it's leaning more towards the A/B alternative. Now, maybe we could have some examples, Ms. Walter, Mr. Legwitz, of the kind of things that are offered concurrently, like a semester schedule. Want to give some examples?
Sure. For example, many of our students previously took Algebra II in the fall semester, and then Algebra III Trig in the spring semester. This year, because of the, the content of those courses, it's, it's academically appropriate for them that they can take it at the same time. So instead of taking one in the fall and one in the spring, they're taking them at the same time, concurrently. So they're not losing out on the option to take those two courses. They're still taking those two courses, they're just both full-year courses, and they're taking them at the same time. Additionally, we did add tonight-
Is, is, is what they were doing before, is that a typical or normal progression?
To take Algebra II and then go to Algebra III Trig?
And then do the other one in the spring? Does one not require knowledge of, of the other?
There is content within Algebra III Trig that they also learn in Algebra II, so there is some repeated content, which is why tonight, we proposed the course Algebra II Trigonometry to blend those two courses. That also opens up the student's schedule who might be taking them concurrently. They can now take an elective or another course in addition to their math, instead of taking two maths. In the four-by-four schedule, they would have been still taking two maths.
I, I just know we've had some issues in math, so I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not, I guess, I, I'm, I'm feeling like, like the baby's gotten thrown out with the bathwater here, and perfectly good schedule is basically just being allowed to slide out, and we're going to replace it with year-long courses. That's, I mean, everything that I'm, I'm hearing is year, that means only four courses a year, right?
Eight. Eight courses a year.
In four years, that's 16 courses.
It's eight courses a year?
Eight courses a year.
It's eight courses.
You're doing away with the four-by-four and replacing it with eight.
So the students are still taking eight courses?
And that, okay, and that's going to be easier, to take eight courses in a semester?
No, it's not. No, the, the feedback that we've gotten from parents is that it's not easier. Students are now taking eight simultaneously instead of four.
And those go all year long, right?
Yes.
On A-Day and B-Day.
The vast majority of students are taking year-long classes. It's a rarity to have a semester-based class.
It didn't, used to be.
Oh, that change was made last year.
Yeah, that's the point I'm making. I'm trying to understand what is the, what was the educational rationale for making that kind of a move? I, I remember the presentation, I, you know, I, I got that, and I, I remember the, the references, which were actually quite old, because that schedule has been around much longer than the four-by-four. So I'm just, you know, are we going forward, or are we just, four-by-four is too hard for our kids, or some dad, I need some, you know, rationale, just, not just because somebody else is doing it and, you know, they like it, so I'm going to like it.
Yeah, well-
Get out there.
We'll provide some additional information, Dr. Beers, about the shift and the number of courses offered and some of the rationale behind it. I'll ask Dr. Worley to provide that at a meeting after this one.
You know, I'm still looking for the, whether there was a significant difference in those scores. I asked about that a couple of months ago. Somebody was going to figure that out. You know, the, the numbers, you know, this, this was really, this was like, you know, a half a point different, and this was, so these are actually doing worse than these kids. And I remember saying, is that a statistical, is that statistically a significant difference? I asked about that. I think, and it, and it falls right in the same area, is, you know, what I'm trying to talk about now. How good is it, or how bad is it, or whatever it might be? That's all. These are, you know, if I don't, somebody else is going to ask those questions, especially, you know, friends, especially folks from the college, when, you know, and by God, they're the toughest ones to deal with. I'm one, I'm one of them. They want to know it. They're going to want to know answers to those kinds of questions. My kid is doing okay in this. Why, why is it, where are we, what's going on? You know, if you go, you know, if you do go to college, you don't take eight courses a semester. What's the most you take? Four? Yeah. So I'm just trying to put my head around that, okay? That's all.
I don't have any comments about this, but I won't say anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a lot, several, so I'll try to breeze through them. So the first one is really kind of silly compared to the really heady stuff that Dr. Beers was talking about. Didn't there used to be a table of contents in this document, or am I making that up?
Um, no, let me look at the old ones. Yes, there did.
Yeah, can we rethink that? Can we put that back in? Because-
The table of content should appear in the, the final draft copy, and does appear in that on Board Docs. The reason it's not there is the pagination shifts when those redline edits are removed, so it would not be accurate to what you see in front of you.
Thank you. Yes, I know that's a little pedestrian, but that caught me off guard. And then also, yeah, I would also like to request and build on Dr. Beers's request for kind of, I'd like to better understand the connection of that study that was presented to us in the spring to this document, and how that informed this. So I don't have an opinion on the four-by-four versus eight-year-long, or, or I guess what I should say is, I don't have an opinion on semester versus year-long, but I would like to revisit that study and connect it to this. So if, at the next meeting, or sometime in the not-too-distant future, if we could revisit that, because I know, my understanding back then, but I didn't retain it all, was that that information was to, supposed to inform the schedule and the program of studies. Is that correct? Okay, yeah. Dr. Worley's sort of nodding a little bit. A refresher there would be helpful. Okay. And then, yeah, and then I just would like to reiterate Ms. Omby's question- And then, yeah, and then I just would like to reiterate, um, Ms. Omby's question about the number of classes, whether we're intending to do eight next year or if we're shifting. Cause my understanding from that study was that we were on a process, a path, and that the shift to year-long was step one of that path. And so maybe I misunderstood that. So I kind of want to, um, because I think, and maybe it is COVID, but I think there may be something to what Dr. Beers is saying about the drop in grades being somewhat related to people who have struggles with executive function managing eight classes at one time in a COVID environment. Cause I'm, I'm, I'm living that dream right now at home. So, um, that's just, you know, maybe a possibility. So I have a question about the science sequence. The language that was presented to us today was that there was an update in the chart or, um, or is that an update in actually how it's supposed to happen? Like, so right now, as I understood, you could just take AP Chemistry, but now you have to take Chemistry before AP Chemistry.
So the, the previous diagram that had been in the program of studies didn't present the science courses as really a menu of options. Nothing has changed about what is offered or who is eligible to enroll in any of these courses. Our coordinator for science simply wanted to present it in a way where students could understand courses that had no prerequisite for enrollment, those that required it, and those that required multiple prerequisites. Part of this is we want to encourage students to consider perhaps taking Biology if they wish in their freshman year. They have that option. We want to consider students who want to prepare for governor's school to know that they have the options to take that feasible path easily. So nothing has changed in what is offered or how they're eligible for those courses. It's simply presenting it based on the prerequisites required for the courses.
But if I read that correctly, or my perception of it was that now I need to take Biology before I take AP Biology? And that, that was not true before. Like I could just jump right into AP Physics if I wanted to. And so is that no longer true?
As far as I understand, and I can come back to you with an answer, no changes in prerequisites happened that were not noted in the program already for science courses.
So if that's the case and you can just jump right into AP Biology or Physics or Chemistry, that chart may not make that clear. And so I'm a little concerned about, okay, now we've switched from year-long, so if I were doing semester, I could take Chemistry then AP Chemistry, but now I can't do that because I'm on year-long. So it, it changes my sequencing a little bit, so I, I think counselors need to be, I, I would just, please make that clear, because if I'm a parent reading that, I may say to my kid, no, 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 it says right here, you need to take Chemistry for, so if for kids who want to jump right into AP, especially now if we're doing year-long, that might impact their ability to kind of jump through, uh, blow through a lot of science classes, for instance, if they want to load up on science. Um, another comment, and I've had this kind of issue for a couple of years, the early college dual enrollment stuff is not super clear to a parent who's not familiar with it. What classes you have to take in order to be able to do early college? What classes are dual enrollment? I know that depend, is dependent on the teacher, but now with the OWL technology, maybe that can be clearer, because if someone wants to take dual enrollment, but it's only at Lafayette, but then now a Jamestown kid can do it, whatever. But somehow, I think being a little bit clearer about that, because I've been in a situation where I thought my kid was just taking English and all of a sudden it was in dual enrollment class and I didn't even know that. And so, um, maybe if that could be somehow clarified for families who are new to the high school scene. And then also, just with along the same lines with the OWL technology, I just think it'd be really critically important that counselors understand that because, um, I guess you're going to have to centralize scheduling on some level or, you know, how, how can you know that a kid at one high school who wants to take African-American history, but that's not offered at that high school, so they have to OWL there, but that's in second period and it's in there in seventh period or, or, you know, block seven? How are you going to manage that? So I don't want that opportunity, I don't want kids to not be able to avail themselves to those opportunities if there's not some sort of coordination going on. Leaving that to happenstance, I think, could result in some kids being, you know, disproportionately negatively impacted. Um, and then I, I just wanted to applaud the addition of African-American history. I'm really glad to see that. That was offered in my high school in the mid-eighties, so glad it's being offered here now. And, um, and I just, back to the question about, um, year-long versus semester, again, I don't really have an opinion on that, except for that if in some places there's semester to allow kids to accelerate and other places that's not available because of critical mass. Again, the OWL technology may fix that or change that, but I, I just want to make sure that that's being looked at holistically with an equity lens. Um, so, and I'm also a little concerned with particularly kids who were on a semester track with word language and math in particular. Now that that switch has happened, they're having to choose a lot more, um, sort of alternative things that they, that really weren't on their radar, and I'm concerned about that. So a lot more electives. I'm sorry, what?
Electives, yeah.
Yeah, a lot more electives, which-
And it is the language that, that's-
So, um, anyway, thank you very much.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, my mind up here and I just have a quick question. Is that all going to be done virtually or, or are they going to come in or, I mean, January all, it looks like, God, all the way through, whatever it is, are they going to be able to get explanations? And the other thing related to that is I, I read in here, um, courses, offerings will be based on, um, the, the interest of, you know, whatever, what the students are interested in. How am I going to know that very first or second day if that's a semester course or a year-long course? If, if you need to know how many students want to take that course, and even if you do know, what makes you decide it's going to be a semester course or a year-long course?
So for the events that are happening in January through March-
Right.
They will happen virtually or in person, dependent upon the current state.
Where we are.
Yes. So flexibility is the key and we, we will meet with our students in whatever way is most appropriate at that time. For the course planning and curriculum fair, we are allowing for questions at that time, even though it is a virtual experience. And so we are providing a way for families and students to submit their questions and then we will release that, those, an FAQ for everything.
Release what? The schedule?
Answers to the questions that families have, have submitted to the entire community on February 19th in that family newsletter.
And what will make you decide, or I guess that's a principle, right? See, this is where it gets really complicated for me.
We're talking about two different things right now.
How will the decision be made that it'll be a semester course or a year-long course?
Dr. Beers, even-
Or is it already set up? Is it already set up? And it's really not a case of the kids creating a schedule. It's following the schedule that's already been created.
But when counselors work with students on course planning and their, their course requests for following years, they'll be able to identify need of semester versus full-year-long courses and then buildings will be able to make determinations.
How will that be demonstrated?
I'm sorry?
How will that need be demonstrated? And if there'll be a semester course or a year-long?
So Dr. Beers, just as clarification, even before the research from the group we looked at last year was presented and when most of our courses were offered semester-based, that decision officially was never presented to the kids when they selected their courses. It was still part of the master scheduling process that took place in the building.
In other words, the schedule was created and then the students figured out where they, where they fit.
And for example, if there was a parent between-
There's language in there that makes it pretty clear that, that the students are creating their schedule and we're not creating, but in fact, we are.
We create the schedules based on student requests. So they, we find out from the students what the requests are, then schedules are developed and then students can find out if it's semester or full year. So it, student input on-
I'm hearing two different things then.
No, I think it's just a, just a slight miss of a step that, that we might not be clarifying well. We get student course requests from all of our students. What is it that they would like to take the following school year? Based on that data, each school determines how many sections they need for all, every course, and then they build their schedules based on that. And then students find out if it's a semester or a full-year course.
But what if they want a semester course and it always shows up as a year-long course?
It-
That's, what, what I'm seeing here is, is a lack of flexibility in the scheduling here. It's, it's like the schedule has been laid out unless a student says, okay, I, for next year or the next two years, whatever it was, I want to be in a four-by-four block, whatever, you know, or, but they're not, they're probably not going to say that, but I just, um, I just think the schedule is more rigid than it used to be. And I don't see the flexibility or the choices or, um, and that bothers me. Cause I remember talking to Jeff Carroll about this, all about the cluster business. Oh, what if I don't know what cluster I want to be in? I'm a late bloomer. I don't know if I want to be a piano player or if I want to be an electrical engineer, whatever it might be. Um, and, and the, and the response was, well, that's not going to be a problem because the way we lay this out, you'll, you'll find something. And it's like, I'm sorry, I, I, it's the same kind of thinking. I'm just worried about that. I, I want, I want flexibility. I want requirements for sure, um, because they're all going to, you know, they all have to have that. But I, I, I keep coming back to that. It's like you get input from the students. I'm assuming that doesn't mean they tell you that I'd like to do this in a semester. I'd like to do this in a year.
So Dr. Course, Dr. Beers, if I can try to explain again a little bit what we were saying earlier, the course requests are what drives how we absolutely do build the schedule. So it's our goal to try to get towards 100% of what students want each year. And part of that is the individual meetings that counselors will have with students, hearing from them, looking at what they need to graduate, what is their course of study, what is their interest, what is their postgraduate plan?
I understand that.
And, and as we, we talked about earlier, even for all the years that I've been here as a principal and now, never was a part of the question. When a, when a student came in to make their schedule, they never sat down and said, I want a year-long course or I want a semester course. It was, these are the courses I would like to take, these will fulfill my requirements. And then it was the job of the leadership team at the school to figure out, okay, how can I make this matrix? That's very challenging for, you know, 1,300 students or 1,200 students or 1,100 students times eight courses. How can I make this work with my current staffing? How can I make the most students get access to the classes? And then we look at times where we don't get to offer every class, every semester, every year at a school and we try to allow to, um, excuse me, students to take the class either virtually or in another school. So I think, you know, through the process, what we've been going through, we did go through a study, we did get information, we did make a change, and we really have had, you know, a lot of change thrown at us at one time and COVID has been a large part of that. So we are hearing your questions. They're very valid and we understand that we have some students that may be frustrated, but I think our counselors are pretty committed to working with them through this, this scheduling year, which is different than anyone we've ever seen, because we've been virtual for most of the year and we've put a lot of innovative things in place to give kids access to what our courses next year can look like. And I know our counselors are going to go above and beyond to reach out to students that may be unsure or unclear about what to choose. And as they go through the process, we will have to look at, you know, what is the best situation for the next year? How can we accommodate what the students need? And that will be through the change, we're leaning towards year-long, but if there's a need for some semester courses, that will happen based upon-
You've said it right there. If there's a need. So the majority of the courses are going to be year-long, right?
Yes. Yes.
I just would like, one of the things I think people need to understand though is when you're in that room with the counselor, they're not, and you say, I want to take Spanish two and three. They're saying, no, you can just take Spanish two.
Right.
Or if you were, if you want to say, I want to take art one and two, or I want to take calculus A, B, and B, C. So some, so some of that's true, but some of it's not true because the, the choice to accelerate is not available if the counselor's telling you, no, 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 now we're in year-long classes, so you can't take two languages, you can't take sequential art, you can't take sequential math. So I, I just want to, I'm not arguing that that's good or bad. I just want to be clear that that's real. That's happening. And so it's not really driven by student need, because in those rooms, students are being told because it's year-long, they cannot take sequential classes concurrently. So I just, I just want to-
And I, I agree. I just, one thing to consider is that it looks different. We, we've been used to a four-by-four, so it happens quicker over time and sequential would be you take the first part one year and the next year you take the second part or, you know, there's options in the summer school, so it does look different. You're absolutely right. But part of the big conversation that the counselors have, and I'm sure Ms. Walter could elaborate to this more, is coming up with that four-year plan. You know, what does it look like? You have these opportunities to earn this amount of credits. What does that look like over four years? And we're in transition now, so that makes it a little different, I think, because students are living both worlds. So, and, and then we have COVID, so, um, yeah.
The counselors really do work with students on what is, what is your goal? And let's look at, let's rewind from your end goal to see how we can help you get there and what that sequence looks like. So it looks a little bit different now because we're in different circumstances, but they are keeping the goal at, at the plan to reach that.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear that it's not completely based on student desire and need, because they're being guided in that room and, uh, things that are sequential now have been significantly slowed down and now can be taken over four years instead of two years, which may be a great thing. Again, I don't have an opinion on that, but it's very different.
Yes.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd say is the data is pretty clear about. Kids who are having challenges, academic challenges, will do better with fewer numbers of courses. You're, you're asking them to take many courses a semester?
Eight.
Instead of four. So I know that there was thinking that this would be better for those kids. I'm not convinced. I haven't seen the data. No, the four does help, because it's more concentrated. I'm just-
Yes.
And, and, you know, I, I don't want you to misunderstand me. While I do think the four-by-four is more advantageous than the other, I do support, I will always support a hybrid. But when you tell me that there'll be a semester course if there's a need, and that tells me pretty much that almost everything in there is going to be. I don't see flexibility there for kids who want to take, um, high-level courses. They want to, they want to get AP credit. They want, you know, they, they, they want to show up in college with a year under their belt, so they only have to spend money for three years of college instead of four years of college. And there are kids that are like that. They just, that's what they want to do. And it's not, it's not a few kids. It's especially in this community. So, um, I'm just, I, it's, it's really, as I, I am still, I'm, I'm putting, trying to put my hands around it, but I'm also using my background, my knowledge about what I know- hands around it, but I'm also using my background, my knowledge about what I know has been helpful or a hindrance to high school students. I also have issues with clusters, but-
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Building on comments that Ms. Cook made with regard to the counselors. I know as a WJCC mom for the last 19 years and having graduated two students and have a current senior and a freshman, we sometimes make changes in the program of studies and I'm not sure we educate our counselors and, and give them enough support to educate parents and students. I guess just building on what Ms. Cook said, I think a lot of times there's confusion, like with regard to biology. I know two of my kids were told, you have to take earth science first, period. And that was from the lead counselor. So if that's a change, I just hope that that's being communicated to all the counselors and that all the counselors have all the same information so that they're giving the same information to all students.
Yes, thank you.
Well, and then again, just to communicate to families too, that students now can still access the same, the same curriculum, but it is spread out over four years. So when you talk about it, it's still sequential. In a lot of people's minds, that sequential means taking it semester one, semester two, and now it's year one, year two. So I think we just need to do a better job of educating. And it will be easier with incoming freshmen. This difficult transition.
And we do have very good counselors and hard-working counselors, and I make sure that they have this information on the changes moving into the scheduling season.
Thank you. I think so, Mr. Kelly. I might raise my hand again.
Um, I don't often have a visceral reaction, but on page 15, I had a visceral reaction. In the virtual learning, we say students desiring to work outside of school must provide their own reliable computer and they have a reliable internet connect access. I feel like I have a reliable computer somewhere in the school division that could give the kid that doesn't have one. And I feel like we need to work with kids that don't have reliable internet access to give them a reliable internet access. So I'm, I'm not a fan of that entire sentence. Classes, I'm not going to go back to the four-by-four and the block in the semester because that has been talked about. And I think, I think I have the same concerns about not having semester-long classes. I think, I think we've had enough information from this experience that we're not sure that it's working as well as it should. So I think we really need to go back and relook at that. The other problem I have too is that if one school has it year-long and the other one has it semester-long, and we try to, try to use the owl technology, that doesn't work if they're not on the same schedule. Makes sense? So, and so I think, I think the technology that we've used since March allows us to have kids at one school that maybe not have as many AP classes to have access to those classes at another school, but the schedules have to work. So we need, I think we really need to put some work on that. The February 5th release Virtual Course Planning and Curriculum Fair, is that like a live online thing, or is that, what is that curriculum fair actually? What is that actually?
We are, it's, it's not live. It will be pre-recorded videos by each content area. Though it will include teachers, curriculum coordinators, school counselors, where families can access all of the different videos to learn more about a specific course or content or course planning and what to look for. And then we are given a period, we are giving, excuse me, a period of time for families to access those videos, submit, in a format to submit questions, and then we will release the answer to those questions as well.
So, so a couple, a couple of, of, I don't know, problems, but issues I see is we, is a lot of it's out in February, and February is a short month. And so if I had my druthers, I'd like to have a do-loop in there somewhere where they can submit questions and they have other questions. Have to get the answers of the first set of questions, but the calendar doesn't support that, but I really would like for it to. I don't know how we can do that.
I think when we release the answers to the questions, if there are follow-up questions, we will have contact information for curriculum coordinators and the appropriate personnel that people can reach out to with more specific questions.
I'd like to think as we have answers to questions, we post them so that people can not wait until they get all the questions.
Great idea. Thank you.
So we can, we can do that. But I think that's all I have for right now. So, so based on this calendar, we have to approve a program of studies at the next meeting so that we can support this?
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Kelly? Yeah, just, I want, as a point of, I learned when I was in the policy committee that most school boards do not approve program of studies. I just want to put, kind of promised myself I would say that every time, that generally that's the job of the superintendent and her staff. Just want to say that.
So, so we don't have to approve the program?
We do, because that's our policy, but that is unusual. Most school boards leave that to the superintendent. Let's say that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Parliamentarian. Any other questions, issues on this? Okay. 8.03, temporarily waive part of policy EB School Crisis Management and Medical Response Plan. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Snipes is here today to present this item, but basically it is pertaining to drills in schools, safety drills in schools that we were unable to do because of COVID, and however that's needed in respect to that. And I think Mr. Snipes is here.
Good evening, school members. I'm Chair, and Dr. Heron, I want to thank you tonight for allowing me to present a recommended, proposed agenda item to temporarily waive part of policy EB, which is school crisis management. The part of the policy that we would like for you to temporarily waive is the request from the state government that says that we have to do a lockdown drill the second part of the year and a tornado drill. Since students are not in school at the present time, it serves no purpose. And the state has given you the authority to waive that until we receive, we get students into school.
Comments? Question? And so, once we get our K through five back, would perhaps drill those students, but not the middle school, high school? Is that what we're talking about?
I can hardly hear you. I'm sorry.
Once we get K through five back, would perhaps drill those students as appropriate, but not do middle school and high school?
Correct. And to, we would, we would drill the students when they get back in school because we would definitely want to do a tornado drill with students in school and another lockdown drill.
We do have students in these schools, English language learners, special ed?
Not today.
Not today? Okay, not yet. If not returned yet. Okay.
And like I said, the new state guidance says it's, it allows you to waive the lockdown on tornado drills, waive lockdown and tornado drills for the entire division until, on a school-by-school basis. So it just allows you to do this on a school by-
My only comment to that is that I think it's, no, the kids aren't in school, so we can't have a school fire drill. But I think it's not a bad thing for the kids to think about at their house, what they do in the event of a fire, what they do in the event of a tornado, and that we can kind of have them, or their parents at least, kind of think about that, because you don't necessarily do that, but you should in your house. Like, what are you going to do if there's a fire? I, I understand why we're waiving the policy and I agree with that, but I just think it's an opportunity to kind of emphasize to some folks, fire safety in the house and tornado safety in the house. But, 8.04, approval of pay scales and classification plan for January-
Mr. Chair?
What?
Is there an end date to this, to this temporary waiver?
There has not, there has not been given an end date yet. It just says to waive lockdown or tornado drills for the entire division on a school-by-school basis.
Would there be an end date?
Can we create one?
I, I would rather just, and that way we don't need to take further action if it's, you know what I'm saying? We don't have to, then, I would rather have an end date on it, and then we're done with it.
Like, can we say something along the lines of whilst, with that, when there are no students in the building, or until there are students back in the building, or?
Or even until the pandemic is, you know, no longer an issue. I don't know, whatever.
Well, if we're in a hybrid plan, we still have the pandemic, but we should still have a fire drill.
And we, is it safe to have a fire drill?
They have students in the building. I think we should.
I mean, well-
A social distance on a, on a, on a drill?
That's, that's not my decision. That's an operational decision. I'm just, I feel like we should have an end date. Whatever it is, whatever your recommendation is, but let's have an end date. And then if we have to redo it, then fine, but-
I would say especially because we're in a pandemic and social distancing and all those things are a part of our lives. If we've got students in the schools, they need to know how to behave during a emergency.
We'd be more than happy to bring back an end date for when it goes on the 19th for approval. I believe the guidance was, was really talking about this particular school year.
Yes.
So I think it's 2021, but we can add that in in terms of what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. That was a great point.
Welcome, sir. I'm happy to contribute.
Are we done? 8.04, approval of pay scales and classification plan for January 2021. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keever's going to represent Mr. Baker tonight. This, this is an item following up from the approval of a 1.5% salary increase in December. Mr. Keever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This is a request to amend and revise our pay scales. When you approved the 1.5% raise, that, that took care of the piece that you've allocated the funds. We need to revise the pay scales accordingly, and would ask for you to go ahead and affirm that this evening so that we can move forward with ensuring that's taken care of, beginning with the January pay period.
So this is, this is just the, a follow-on from our last meeting where we approved the 1.5%?
Correct. I believe the board typically will approve the pay scales in the latter part of a, a year preceding the next year. And so this is a perfunctory piece of it based on the fact that you have approved the pay raise as of December.
Right. Anybody have any questions about that?
It is on later for approval.
Right, it's on, it's, it's on today's, today's agenda for approval.
Yes, sir.
Got you. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to action items. Item 9.01, approval of personnel actions as presented in closed session. Do I have a motion?
Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook?
Cook and Young.
Is there a second?
Ms. Young.
Ms. Young has a second. Any discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. 9.02, approval of minutes from the December 4th, 2020 and December 8th, 2020 meetings. Your motion?
Chair, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the following meetings, December 4th, 2020 and December 8th, 2020.
Well, that's hard to say, Ms. Young. I, I, any problem? Is there a second?
Second. It's because I'm better.
Ombi, what's that? Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. 9.03, resolution R1-21, appreciation of double, WJCC principals. Is there a motion for approval?
Chair, I move that we approve the resolution R-1-21, appreciation of WJCC principals.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there any discussion?
I appreciate the activities list included in board docs.
I appreciate Ms., Dr. Heron presented this during her comments tonight, and I appreciate the work that our principals do. I know it's, it's a year unlike any other, and of all the appreciation in the world for what they do. So, that will take a vote. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Item 9.04, approved release from compulsory attendance cases R21-02 and R21-03. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve release from compulsory attendance cases R21-02 and R21-03.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mr. Dowell. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. 9.05, approval of pay scales and classification plan for January 2021. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
Chair, I move that we approve the pay scales and classification plan for January 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. 9.06, revise and rename policy JM restraint and seclusion of students to policy JM physical restraint and seclusion. Can I have a motion?
Chair, I move that we revise and rename policy JM restraint and seclusion of students to policy JM physical restraint and seclusion.
Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, cook. Any discussion? Talked about this at our last meeting. Hearing none. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Item 9.07, revised policy EDC authorized use of school-owned materials. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move that we approve the revisions to policy EDC authorized use of school-owned materials.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Item 9.08, revised policy EI insurance management. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the revisions to policy EI insurance man-
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. I really want to have a deep discussion on insurance policies late in the night in the school board meeting, but I guess we'll move on. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you much. So that brings us to 10.01, board members' comments. Since you've gone last for two years, Ms. Ombi?
Wow. A long meeting. I just want to say to our families and students, hang in there. And I think those watching our meeting tonight, some may understand where we're coming from, others might, might not agree. But clearly, the division is committed to the education of our students, as recognized by the amount of time we spent talking about the program of studies. So we do plan for our students to return when it's safe to do so, and I respect everyone's impassioned opinions, and we do want to hear from you. So continue to let us know what you think. At the end of the day, we, we'll make our decisions based on the data that's available to us. So much, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
I already said my passioned plea for restraint during this time in safety, but I would like to call attention to the fact that we lost a wonderful member of our community this week. We lost Dan Barner, who was the athletic director for Lafayette High School for many, many years. I know that I had three children that graduated from Lafayette High School. They all were in sports and, and theater. And I sat through probably 10 of Dan Barner's parent meetings where he talked about ethics. He talked about integrity. He talked about teamwork. He talked about the importance of academics and the student-athlete, with student coming before athlete. He talked about competition and good sportsmanship. He supported every single athlete at Lafayette High School. He made sure that they were to, they received tutoring if they needed it. They received coaching that was just so above-board and, and so wonderful. He also, in addition to being the athletic director, he reached across to- He also, in addition to being the athletic director, he reached across to, you know, the theater people, the forensics people. When my daughter was in the one-act play and they went to states, he and Eric Stone drove to Charlottesville so that he could support the theater group for their presentation. This man was unparalleled and personified integrity. And I just want to say that our community has lost just a wonderful, wonderful individual. There is going to be, Eric Stone is organizing a drive-through, I guess, event, celebration of his life. And so if anyone is interested, they can reach out on, I think, the Lafayette Rams Facebook page and find out more information. But I would just like to say, this man also encouraged me to run for, to put my name in the hat for being a school board member. I don't think I would be a school board member if it wasn't for, yes, Dan Barner, if it wasn't for Dan Barner. So I just want to say kudos to just a wonderful, wonderful man, and he will be very, very missed.
Dr. Beers?
Hard to talk about. Knew Dan for years. My kids went to Lafayette, played. Really, really, and Julie, really focused on student athlete. Student first, and if you're an athlete and a good one, that was great. But the most important thing was, a good student. Pretty yourself, he was incredibly honest and very forthright. He, yeah, he'll be, that's really hard for me to. I also, I wasn't overly correct. I, the folks who put together the program of studies, I know that's a chore every year and particularly this year. And also, going from one kind of a schedule to another kind of, I hope that I was able to point out some things that they might find useful about sharing that program with students, but also with parents as well. And I also, I don't know why, Julie, I echo you again. I don't, I, I, I don't understand why, why we have parents who really don't seem to be as concerned about whether their kids are down with the virus or whether they're gonna finish up that AP course. It's really, they really have to, they have to stop that, just have to stop and think. But they need to realize, there is not a single person on this board or our superintendent or staff that do not want to get our students back in school just as healthily and as quickly as we can. And we're not going to be, we're not going to be deterred by, you know, we've all got pretty good thick skins, right? Superintendent, isn't that right? We can, they got to catch us first, but I fully support the calendar that we've been working with and using data, using real data. And we really saw some powerful data tonight that really helps inform us as to how we should move forward. I appreciate. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Yes, I guess. First of all, I just wanted to thank our principals. I know that a resolution does adequately express to you our thanks for all of your efforts and for the struggles you've had this year, but want to let you know that we support you and will continue to do so. The second thing I just wanted to say, one of the greatest things about teachers, I've always thought of teaching as a calling. And when you have a person, I don't know Dan Barner, but when you see the impact that he has on people and their lives, that's when you realize that when you look at the pay scale, we don't nearly pay our teachers. And very committed professionals enough for the contributions they make to your child's life, to your, to your home life. And it has not just a few very, it's not a short impact on a person, but it's a lifelong impact. And then to parents, I think as you listen, I hope you listen tonight to decisions that are made, it is data-driven. And you need to know, your frustrations are ours. We share the same frustrations. We are just as concerned about getting kids into school as you are. We want them there. I think there isn't a single person that doesn't want them there. We just, just are going to have to be patient and I guess continue to be frustrated because things don't move at the rate I would like them to. And apparently, I'm not in charge. I'm kind of surprised to hear that, but I'm not. So just hang in there and be patient. Hopefully, this, the only thing I can tell you is I'm glad 2020 is over through all of this, but Happy New Year and looking forward to see what this year will bring and hope it's better than last. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I have a handful of things I'd like to say, but kind of a departure from normal. I hope you'll allow me because I think it's germane to tonight's meeting with regard to citizen comments. Dr. Heron, do you, my understanding is that, that I guess there was a glitch and that there were some citizen comments, but somehow we lost them.
She's undercutting me again.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kelly has invited Megan and I.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, then let me.
As we all suspected, due to a technical issue, the Division did not receive citizen comments for this week's school board meeting. If you recorded a phone message prior to tonight's meeting, we apologize for that deeply. Please send a private message to the WJCC Schools Facebook account with your contact information. We will reach out to you personally to re-record your message. It will then be shared with school board members and posted on the School Division website. We apologize for the technical issue and appreciate your willingness to share your comments. Thank you. That's currently on our website. We do apologize. We did not, there was nothing nefarious going on here. And based upon the comments that we get from tonight's meeting and for the next meeting, we will likely adjust the time for public comments to make sure that everybody has their opportunity to present their comments. So once again, we do deeply apologize for that. And we do want to hear from the public. We do want to hear public comments. And there was, we apologize for not having them for tonight, so.
Sorry, I didn't realize that you had that information. I just had, saw it, it popped up on my phone. Dr. Heron, so I guess what I'm thinking is that maybe for people who aren't listening tonight and people who aren't on our Facebook page, if there's any way we can really do our level best to really broadcast that out because, yeah, and I think just for people who may not know, our long time, the line that was used, right, was the long time, the line for the longtime board clerk. And so perhaps in her, I don't know. So, but we did have a change in personnel, in our board clerk who retired after 20 years of amazing service. And so maybe something happened there, but as Mr. Kelly said, there was nothing nefarious. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to be parliamentarian, but I did want to say that I will do my best, but I still think Ms. Hummel's the best parliamentarian ever. And every now and then, I go back and watch her footage. I wanted to thank Mr. Kelly and congratulate him, thank him for his service and look forward to working with you and look forward to your leadership. And I wanted to thank Ms. Ombi for her two years of phenomenal service leading our board. You were steadfast and passionate and dedicated and sacrificial so many times. You sacrificed so much for the good of this organization and the board. So I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank the families who came out tonight to greet us as we came in the meeting, to meet and to share their thoughts about returning to learn. I appreciate your passion and, you know, please keep us in the loop on your thinking. Unfortunately, I can't say I agree with you at this time, but in big picture, I certainly do. And I just encourage everyone to be safe and take care of yourselves and each other if you can.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Dowell? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. I caught myself a few times tonight. I'm learning the pain of being vice chair of going last and Mrs. Hummel knows that. And so I also want to say I'll be putting your number on speed dial to learn as much as I can from you and from all of my board colleagues. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve in this way. It does mean a lot to me and it's, so thank you. The other things, we talked about COVID a lot. Of course, we would during this, during this time in our lives, you know, this virus isn't going away. I would share that back in March, April, May, June, July, I was one of those that didn't know anybody that had contacted the virus, had come down with it. And that's really changed here in the last month, last two months, really has hit home. It's real, what they say, you don't know how you're going to be affected by it, you know, what symptoms you're going to come down with. I know a young man, just recently, that was rushed to the hospital, and by young, I mean middle school. And so you just don't know. And so the mitigation strategies that we're putting in place, they are critical, they're important. The different aspects of caring for our staff and our students as they go home to their parents and their loved ones, they are critical and they're important. And what I liked about our conversation tonight, loved about the conversation tonight, is that we are still creating ways to adapt to this virus. I love the Health Advisory Action Team. I appreciate that they're willing to donate their time to this cause, having some exceptional expertise on this matter. It means a lot. And I think it's going to get us closer to getting us to having that K through five group back as safely as possible, when it's possible. So I appreciate that. But we've got to stay vigilant. We've got to recognize that this thing is real, it's not going away. It's not a hoax or gimmick. Or being affected by it, as Ms. Hummel stated earlier very well. I think that's what I want to say. So I want to leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. We've been here for a while since we started at four, but I just want to thank staff for their work tonight in the budget retreat and in preparation for the board meeting. Very well presented, very well thought out, and I appreciate the good work there. I want to thank Ms. Robinson for sitting in as our board clerk tonight. Excellent job. And I also, I won't say irritated, she probably will, but I've talked with her several times in the past week and she's been quite, was quite wonderful. So I thank her for her patience there. Following on to what Mr. Dowell and others said about working to get our kids in school and, you know, and Sandy saying that, you know, we're not in charge, we're not in charge, the virus is in charge. And I hope, I hope people watching tonight understand that we aren't making these decisions lightly. We are looking at the data. We're very considered, consider these issues very strongly. Every one of us, everybody wants to get the kids back in school, but we have to do it safely. So we're going to see what happens with the numbers here after the holidays. As Mr. Dowell talked about with the medical advisory team, I think that's absolutely outstanding. But we've got to stop this community spread. We've got to implement the mitigation strategies. We've got to wear masks. We've got to limit our in-herd actions, socially distance. We've got to be smart and minimize our risk. It's just what we have to do. And we had to avoid the COVID fatigue, you know, we've been doing this since March, but, you know, the numbers are stepping up and we got to really make sure we keep our game up and step up our game. And most importantly, we still have to practice civility, patience, respect and understanding as we work our way through this. And we will work our way through this, so. That's all I'm going to say about that. I did the, I attended the Jamestown Holiday Cabaret in December. It is not, was not what I expected, but that is art. And I was, I enjoyed it, I enjoyed it anyway. So it was, that's what art does to you. It gives you things that you're not expecting to. So I, and I appreciated all the work there from the Jamestown, Mr. Stone and from the actors and students at Jamestown that put that on. I appreciate the good work even in this Zoom environment. Janet Sersa's retirement, she is on her way off to South Carolina to enjoy her retirement. And I'm sure she is diligently watching the school board meeting from her house today. So anyway, and I'm glad we talked about Dan Barner. My kids did not go to Lafayette, but every time I went to Lafayette, I went to his office and I enjoyed every visit. I think, I don't know this, but I'm pretty sure he was, he's the one who kind of encouraged the football players to be in the theater. And I've always enjoyed Lafayette plays, you know, you have the football coach and the lineman are all in there dancing and doing tap. And I just think that's, I just think that's awesome. So, and Dr. Heron talked to me earlier last week about the drive-by. And I hope I didn't go out of line, but speaking for the board, but I thought that was absolutely appropriate and think that's great. One of the things, when I went to his office, I always enjoyed the conversations. He always talked about Lafayette athletics and, but he still knew about my kids and talked about them. The one story I talked, that I have to share is when you both talk about ethics, is he talked about when he suspended himself from a game because he, I guess he went out of line on a referee sometime and then he thought about it later and he suspended himself from a football game. So I just thought that, I just thought that was awesome. We talked about citizen comment. My understanding is that has also been emailed out to families and staff as well. So we're getting, trying to get the word out there and to recover from that. And once again, I do apologize for that technical glitch. As Cook said, the number that we were using was Ms. Sersa's desk phone. And I imagine when she left, they killed the number and everything associated with it and we were too efficient at that. So I do apologize for that. Upcoming events, 21st Century and Career Ready Committee, Renaissance Committee meets on January 13th, virtually at 3:30. The School Liaison Committee meets on January 14th at 8 o'clock AM, also virtually. CAC is meeting January 14th at 6:30, virtually. We have the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference coming up on January 25th and 26th, also virtually. And the VSBA new chair and board member orientation is February 2nd. That is, upcoming meetings, we have a budget work session, January 19th, 4 to 6, here in the annex, followed by the closed session on January 19th at 6 o'clock here in room 300. Public comments on the 2001, 2021 and 2022 budget we'll have on January 19th at 6:30. And then the regular meeting of the school board will immediately follow that. All of that is here in room 300. The meeting after that is February 2nd, closed session at 6 o'clock here in room 300. The work session at 6:30 here in room 300. And February 16th, closed session, 6 o'clock here. Actually, we call that Building F, but I think we're going to change that. So we, right now, we say, we say the closed session, February 16th, 6 o'clock in Building F. And then the regular meeting, February 16th to 6:30 is in Building F, but that is likely to change this meeting. For that, the proposed agenda items will be on the agenda for next week as well as the superintendent's contract. Out of objection? Yes, ma'am?
I just ask that staff.
I just ask that staff make sure persons who are assigned new committees have their Zoom links, so... And then, Mr. Kelly, do we know which board members are going to go to the VSBA Capital Conference, virtually?
Yes.
Then let us know.
If you ask to go, you're going. Right now, I think I've heard from all but one that want to attend.
Okay, so I guess we'll get a link for that as well?
Yeah.
ours can take care of that.
Robinsons are here on that. Without objection? They're finally adjourned.